Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize for being a little late. We went to executive session to discuss an item that will be brought up later on in the meeting. At this time, I will call the Village of Fishkill Planning Board for September 19, 2024 to order where the secretary please take a roll call to establish a quorum.
Teresa Cacciallo here. Tricia Rice here. Ezra Holly.
Here.
Esther Jackson.
Here.
Joe Tessa.
Here.
Oh, sorry, my pen. Other members or other people attending are building instructor Dave Buckley, village engineer, Paji, and I just got so shook. The attorney, Victoria. Thank you, Sarah Brown, planner.
Okay. This time I'd like to introduce Esther Jackson and Joe Tessa as new alternate members to the board. Welcome. And Tricia Rice, who's a permanent member of the board. Tricia, welcome.
So no Anthony? Anthony's phone?
Huh?
Anthony?
He's not here tonight.
Oh, but he's still on the board?
As of right now, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we have full board meeting. At this time, I'm going to say, tell Joe that because Anthony, one of our board members is not present, Joe, you will be acting in his position and you will be a voting member. Okay? Even though the alternates, please feel free to ask any of your questions because you are a member of the board. Okay, this time I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of 7:18, 2024.
So moved.
Have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Host, carry. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing for Go Health Urgent Care, 701, 703, Route 9.
Agreed.
Okay.
Motion in the second on the floor to open up the public hearing for Go Health Urgent Care. The representative, please fill us in.
I am Kelly Leibl, but I'm going to do my best to represent. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Amy Archirakis. I'm with KARC Planning, and we're here tonight on behalf of Go Health Urgent Care for who seeking a special use permit. The site is right down here on the corner of Main Street and Route 9, Village Shops, which is a multi-tenanted building. There are two vacant spaces, formerly AT&amp;T and GameStop, that will be consolidated into one space totaling just over 2,100 square feet. Go Health Urgent Care Centers are open 365 days a year. They offer an array of care from ERGs to COVID testing, infections, injuries, telemedicine, imaging, just to name a few. They're open from Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Saturdays and Sundays from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and this does include holidays. There's typically one doctor, one technician, and one medical assistant on site during the hours of operation. Their goal is to treat patients within one hour from check-in to checkout. We did appear before you last month. We received some feedback and we provided you with the following in our most recent submission. We made some corrections to the site plan. We had to fix the tenant list. We modified the parking table, and we provided a water table to the village engineer and water superintendent for review. There was concern as to how the medical waste was handled. The medical staff stores the items in a non-porous EPA container. It's smaller than a 13-gallon trash bin. It's locked safely in a work lab area. There's a regularly scheduled pickup by their vendor, and the waste is brought to an incinerator. We also provided you with the signed resolution and approved site plan set from 2009 at the request of the attorney, and we provided you with the filed map of 2011. So tonight, we are before you requesting the recommendation to circulate to county planning and to open and close the public hearing. I did provide all of the public hearing receipt cards to Jenny earlier this evening. That's all I have. I'm happy to answer any easy question, anything, or personal. Anything I can't answer, of course, I will respond first thing tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to have a question or want to make comment? No? Going once? Public hearing. Now's the time for it. Going twice? Three times? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
We can't close the public hearing.
Oh, that's right, because of county. Okay.
When do we get to ask questions? Okay.
Want to go over the... Yes. Okay, we'll send this to the county and continue the public hearing and stay open until the next meeting. Comments?
Yeah, I can go over my comments. Amy, I had one question. Thank you for providing the off-street parking schedule. In there, it says that Domino's requires zero seats because it's, or that it has zero seats so that it doesn't require any parking, but we do have a fast food requirement, which is one per 60 square feet, so you'll have to adjust the table.
One per 60?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in my memo. I can send you a copy.
Thank you very much.
So that parking requirement will have to get adjusted.
Okay.
The other thing that I wanted to bring up, I know parking, we were waiting for additional information on the off-street parking, and you had provided the resolution from the previous approval in 2011. At that time, the planning board had made a determination that in the mix of uses that were originally approved, 51 parking spaces was the number that would adequately serve the plaza. But now that we have a new mix of uses in there, I think the board is going to have to reaffirm the number. We'll have to get the correct calculation with the Domino's, but then the board will have to determine that there's enough spaces available and that a variance isn't required.
Okay.
So in my memo, what I've recommended is that a parking analysis be prepared, taking counts over a week period at the times where you feel the urgent care will be the most, the peak times of use of the urgent care. Because based on the narrative, it sounds like you'll be using probably nine spaces per hour. I think there's four doctors, nurses, employees, and then the peak number of patients per hour is five. So worst-case scenario, you're going to be probably using nine spaces an hour.
Right.
Because it said the average appointment, the average time in the facility is about an hour.
Right.
So we just want to make sure that there's, with the mix of uses, that there's nine spaces available.
Okay.
Thank you. Those were my only comments for now.
Engineering?
Secretary has my comment. I already collected a copy, but my recollection is the only significant comment. The only significant comment was the need for backflow prevention devices, which are really just a technical item. And, you know, we could even consider that as an additional tool if the decides to make such a point in the future. So it would be to their benefit to address now to get a call, but it's, you know, it's the lights on the public water supply to protect the water supply assembly at that facility.
Okay.
That would be good for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Teresa, any comments, questions this time?
Not yet. I don't think I got this. No.
Okay. Esther, do you have any comments?
I have three, three questions, if that's okay.
We'll go down to the...
Oh, sorry. I thought you said...
I'm sorry.
Neither am I.
Tricia.
I'm good, thank you.
I'm good.
I have three questions. The first is if the public hearing is open, how do the, how do the public make comments between now and the next planning board meeting?
They can make a written comment.
Okay. So people, if they want to make a comment while the public comment period is open, they can make a written comment, and they would send it to the village hall?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a contact person if they wanted to do that?
You can contact Jenny.
Okay. So Jenny is the contact person for public comments during the open comment period. Okay, great. And then my second question is if the planning board members have a copy of the engineering report as well?
You just got it.
Oh, I just got it. Okay, so there's one copy that's being passed around to the planning board members. I have my own and it was emailed to me. Okay, great. That answers that question. And then my additional question is, there's a statement in the KARC Planning Consultants Document on page three that says they provide information about existing wastewater demand and proposed wastewater demand in lieu of an engineering report. Does that mean that the engineering report that we received, conducted by the village, is the engineering report?
That's correct.
Okay, great. So the applicant doesn't have a requirement to provide an engineering report. The village does that for the applicant?
No.
Well, I'm confused. Okay. Oh, I see. I see. So there are comments from the engineer on what's on page four, which is like presented in lieu of an engineering report. Is that right, or am I misunderstanding? Thank you very much. I'm new, so I'm just trying to understand.
Seeing a page four.
I think she's on the KARC document. I think it's Alice's case. Yeah. Right in this, this is...
Yeah, just the language that caught me was that we are providing the information below in lieu of an engineering report. And I kind of wondered like, well then how is engineering assessed?
Consultants say, yes, because this is basically the attitude.
Okay. Okay, great. And so the comments from the consultant, I have those. I just...
Our response to that comment is on our comment letter, and that's what I had just explained.
Okay, great. And that's in my packet?
Yes.
Okay.
Should be now. We have to deploy.
You just brought it with you tonight. I don't know if I have a copy of it.
The packet that Jenny gave you, it's in there. It's probably, it's the one that says Lawrence Paji at the top. Oh, okay. There you go.
Perfect, thank you. Well, I have one for Crystal Bliss. Oh, they're all together. Okay, great. That'll be, that'll keep things faster for the other ones. Thank you so much. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Okay.
No question.
Okay. Okay. You've got some homework to do. We'll see you next month.
See you next month. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, that's sort of county.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, I'll entertain a motion that we send this to Duchess County Planning for their review.
Agreed.
Second.
Have a motion second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Host, carry. I read it.
Oh, we never closed it.
We never closed it.
Never mind.
Can't close it. My mistake. Okay. The next item on the agenda, though, might as well do the public hearings. It's the... My paperwork here.
Jenny, do you have extra copies of the comment letter?
Which one?
Here.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay.
Two pages, yep. Do you need some extra copies?
Okay. I'll entertain a motion that we open up the public hearing for Vibe Natures 982 Main Street. Site plan. Pardon?
That's for the dispensary. There's two at 9:02.
Right. Well, we scheduled the public hearing for them last month, so we're opening up the public hearing for that now.
For the dispensary?
Another motion?
Oh, I move to open the public hearing for I-420 dispensary.
Have a second? I have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Eric, the applicant, please come forward.
My name is Paul. I actually work with the Interstate 420. I help operate the dispensary itself. We operate four other ones currently. This would be our fourth retail location. We have one temporary delivery. I think you guys got the site plan on September 3rd with all the things that were required from our last meeting.
Yeah, Brian, you're looking for an aspect.
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay.
Yes, we received your packets, and I have reviewed them from the planning aspect of things. Hans, I don't know if you want me to go over my comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please.
I'm down to housekeeping items. The application was sent to Duchess County Planning for their review and comment, and the county has recommended that the board rely upon its own study of the facts to make a decision and provided no additional comments. As far as the site plan goes, I just have a few typos that need to be corrected on it. One place says Town of Fishkill instead of Village, and then we need the additional, we need the addition of signature blocks for the chairman's eventual signature upon approval. And then, as part of the application, the applicant had prepared a parking analysis of the existing parking lot, providing us with a week's worth of data of how many parking spaces were available. We have reviewed that and found it to be sufficient. There seems to be adequate parking for the amount of staff and the anticipated number of retail customers that they will have. We've looked at it in comparison, comparison to other retail uses. So the board will have to make as part of your approval a determination that the parking analysis did cover and provided adequate parking in the parking lot. But that's it. I don't have any more comments on the application.
Engineer?
We have a similar comment to the last project relative to the... The backflow prevention. Sarah, Brian makes a comment here about some confusion about the applicant and the owner, the project name, saying that it's commented that Vibe Natural, Carnegie and Sons LLC and 1420 dispensary are listed direct materials, and it's not clear who the applicant, the owner are. So can we just make a better indication on that?
Yeah, I think we covered that at an earlier meeting when we, yeah, asked about, I think your original name was Vibe Natural. Yeah.
Our 420, Interstate 420 is a consulting company that helps get everybody situated, especially.
Okay, so...
So regarding the materials that you submitted, still showing some Vibe Natural name on it. That, that's what I'm gathering, the comment would mean. So we just need to make sure that the plans are consistent. Okay?
Okay.
That's really just a technicality. And you understand, you understand the comment relative to the backflow prevention device, what the responsibilities are there?
Okay.
Hans, that's all, that's all we had.
I do, I have another question because I just want to make sure I have it right on my notation. So the I-420 dispensary was actually your expediting company, not...
Carnegie Sons is the...
Owner and applicant?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure because I put 420 dispensary on something I want to strike it. Thank you.
It's a being a public hearing. Is anybody in the public wish to make comment at this time? Questions? No? Going once? Twice? Three times? Okay. Teresa, you have any comments, questions?
I guess this is more to Larry because the letter that was submitted about the plumbing from... Is that, is it okay?
They still owe us some information.
Okay.
Our last comment from September 18th is still remains pertinent, but again, we handle that comment as conditions of approval in the past.
Okay.
Tricia?
Not at this current time, no.
Esther?
Just a clarification. So what you're talking about, what you just talked with Larry about is the engineer's report about the village water superintendent consultation?
Right.
Okay. And is that comment a publicly available comment? Or can I like summarize it? Or do people have access to what that like requirement is somewhere? Like if someone lived near this business and wanted to understand what that requirement is, is there a place where they could like read that online at this point?
Read what?
Well, I'm just, I would love to like read out the comment, but it sounds like, I'm just trying to figure out if people would already know this requirement.
It's been in our comments since October of last year.
Okay, great. And so it's like publicly on the Village of Fishkill website. That's amazing. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
No comment, question?
No comment, okay. We have heard from the county, and it's up to us. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Have a motion second on the floor, close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Host. Our next step.
I did prepare a draft resolution. If the board didn't have any more questions and if there was nothing raised at the public hearing, so if you would like me to, I could go over the draft resolution of approval.
Go ahead.
There is a correction. Just I had put Carnegie and Sons LLC and then I-420 dispensary, but that I-420 dispensary should be struck because that is the expediting company. Whereas the Village of Fishkill Planning Board has received application for site plan approval for an existing tenant space from the conversion of a former instructional use space to a retail space on the parcel identified as 982 Main Street. Whereas the applicant has submitted materials for the board's review. Whereas the proposed action is a type-two action requiring no further processing under SECR. Whereas on September 19, 2024, the Village of Fishkill Planning Board held a public hearing to elicit public comment. Whereas the application was referred to Duchess County Planning in accordance with general municipal law, and the department responded by way of its referral dated August 2nd and recommended that the board rely upon its own study of the facts to make a decision. Whereas the planning board is familiar with the site midst vicinity and the development regulations of the zoning law. Whereas as part of other site plan applications for tenant space change in use within a shopping plaza with pre-existing parking, the planning board has made determination regarding required parking pursuant to Section 17197b of the zoning law. Whereas a parking analysis of the existing parking was prepared by the applicant to demonstrate that there is adequate parking available at peak business times. And whereas the planning board has determined after consideration of the parking analysis that there is adequate available parking at peak times of business activity. Whereas the planning board has reviewed and given due consideration to the application materials and all other information submitted by the applicant and the village's planning and engineering consultants for their review. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grant site plan approval to the project as shown in the application materials, subject to the compliance with the following conditions. Following conditions shall be fulfilled prior to signing of the site plan drawings by the board chairman. The site plan shall be revised to remove the Town of Fishkill, the phrases Town of Fishkill Preliminary Platform SUP and Plans for Special Use Permit Labels. The signature block shall be provided on the site plan for the chairman's signature. Compliance with the comments in the Village of Fishkill Consulting Engineers memorandum dated September 19, 2024 to the satisfaction of the village engineering consultant, and then the payment of all professional consultation fees. With regards to site plan approval, the following general conditions shall be fulfilled. The planning board hereby reserves the right to make a field inspection of the overall site. These are just the general conditions that go into all of them, all of our resolutions. And any future modifications of the subject property shall be subject to further planning board review and approval as required. In accordance with Section 17183e1 of the zoning law, this approval shall expire or become void one year from the date of the adoption of this resolution if no work has been done on the project, or shall expire two years from the date of the adoption of this resolution if the proposed improvements are not completed unless extended by the planning board.
Okay. Any further comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, related again to the water. So what it says here is the village water superintendent shall be consulted to determine the degree of hazard and backflow prevention requirements associated with the proposed use. Existing slash proposed backflow prevention requirement should be, should also be indicated in the plan. And is that addressed within this resolution?
Yes, because that's a, all the comments in the engineer's letter are incorporated into this resolution.
So then the engineer is the one who gives approval for that modification?
Correct.
And is that also shared with the board, or is it just shared with the engineer?
We, we, as your planner and your engineer, we review it to make, review the amended plans to make sure they comply with the resolution before they're signed by the chairman. Great, thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the resolution for Carnegie and Sons with the removal of the I-420 dispensary correction and as it, as part of the rest of the resolution.
Have a motion second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Host, carry. While we still here, we have them. We'll do the certificate of appropriateness outside of the building. What are your colors? What are your...
Oh, it's green and pink.
Do you have samples?
I don't, I don't...
I think you have.
Are you painting outside?
No, no.
This is for sign.
For the sign.
No, okay.
There's no what? There's no what?
There's no certificate of appropriateness.
That's, that's what it would be.
So there's, you're not going to paint the outside of the building?
No.
So there's no, you don't need a certificate of appropriateness if you're not going to do anything. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're not painting the outside. We're just, we're using a last sign.
So there's no sign application?
We don't have a sign up.
We didn't do the sign. They'll, they'll be back in for the sign.
Okay.
Right.
Bring samples, please.
Oh, on the outside?
Good.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, welcome to Village of Fishkill. I thought, I thought you were going to come and do something. Okay, next item on the agenda is Factory Auto Parts, nine eighty-two Main Street, suite two. Appleton, please come forward.
Hello, everyone. Um, I'm Captain Shobin Fast Signs. I'm here representing the, uh, client. And just looking to approve the, um, pylon, the front facade sign and, uh, graphics that I believe have all been submitted at this point. And I do have additional samples if necessary, but I believe you have.
Yeah, the sign we're going to have to do separate.
Okay.
There's, there's a little bit more to just putting it on the site plan, but I'll talk with you about that.
Okay.
Okay.
Site plan? Uh, it's an existing business.
So what, this, uh, oh, the auto parts, your, your auto parts?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Yeah, I didn't think.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was on, I was on the next, I'm sorry. I was on the next agenda item.
Okay, I was, I was confused. Uh-oh.
Continue.
Didn't hire me for that, man.
So this is where the other auto parts place is?
Yes.
Is, was?
Correct. Uh, Factory Motor, uh, Ports bought out that whole business and they are replacing them nationwide.
Are you going to open on Sundays?
I do not know on the Sunday.
Just wondering.
Any good auto parts still?
That's probably the only time my windshield wiper fluid runs out.
Exactly, exactly. And blinker fluid too, right?
Oh, wait.
So you're looking, you're looking for, for the sign above the door, right?
Correct. Uh, we're putting in a twelve-foot box sign above the, above the door, uh, which I believe, uh, all falls within standards of the town, uh, the square footage. Uh, additionally, the two pylon, um, uh, you know, um, polycarbonate panels for the pylon, one for each side, and then the, uh, door graphics and graphics for the windows. I believe color samples have been provided and I actually have physical samples if necessary as well. Teresa, you have a lot of thoughts?
I want to.
That's, uh, to the pylon face, that's, we're going to be designing face, um, pylon face, pylon face, they're all identical.
Yeah.
And then obviously, I'm not happy with the way they printed them. We're going to do much better than that, but that's the.
It's just red, gray and black.
Yep.
And white in the background. F M P mean Factory Motor Port.
Those are the exact colors?
Uh, yes. Yep. It's going to be gray, uh, white and black. Gray, white, red and black.
So it's it's just going to pick one of the empty spaces on the pylon?
Yes, it's going to take over the original space that was on there for the auto parts.
There it is. I see it.
Yep. Yeah, it's kind of hard to see in the small there, but yes.
Yeah.
It's just going to replace the exact same location.
Oh, yeah. There it is. He's going to make bigger ones. Why is all of you so big? At the tiny store. It was a lot less stuff there then. Okay.
They, do the signs comply?
That sign is fine. It does comply. Internally lit, it's allowed to be internally lit in that sign district.
Are we doing, is it two? Do we have to do two applications or two approvals for the door sign?
Yeah, we can do them both.
Okay, we do both at the same time?
Yeah, do it all at once.
Okay.
Considering we have all the samples here.
Yep.
And everything is compliant.
Nice.
Teresa?
No, good. Thank you for bringing samples.
You're welcome.
Teresa?
Good.
Isaiah?
Wonderful girl.
Yep.
Ezra?
Wonderful.
That's wonderful sentence.
Mister?
I think it looks great. I just would like to know, that's a different sign zone because it's, uh, west of Jackson. Is that how it works? Like the historic area is a different sign zone from the, okay, cool. Good to know. Thank you.
Yeah, they look great. Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Ooh.
Have a motion and second on the floor. To approve the signs, all in favor?
Okay.
Yep, Jenny has to agree.
Oh, second?
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Have a motion second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, Carrie. Okay.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful night.
Yeah.
Welcome to the Village.
Yeah, welcome, even though you're here. Next item on the agenda is Lesumet. Uh, eleven oh eight Main Street for a sign approval. Appleton, please come forward.
Ooh. Thank you, Dave.
Hi, I'm Debbie Majakabo from Quick Signs, representing Lesumet. Um, we're just basically refacing a sign that's there, the old Sapori sign. The blade sign that's the hanging woman hanging there.
My phone isn't that good. What does it mean?
I don't know. I don't even, anybody? I don't even know if I'm saying it right.
The top, the summit, the summit. Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Dave, the, uh, yeah, uh, it's, this is fine. They, they just took the, uh, the existing sign down and it's a, it's just an exact reface of, um, that perpendicular projecting sign.
That'd be correctly, yes, correct. Thank you.
We have the color samples? Okay.
It's blue.
Blue. We have all the insurance papers and everything for the, because of the.
I have, yeah.
Yeah, we got all that. It's on somebody's head.
Okay. Teresa?
They said it was compliant.
Yeah, they said it was compliant.
No, good. Thank you. Thank you for bringing sample.
Teresa?
Looks very good. Mm-hmm.
Good. Good.
No comment.
Okay. Sign complies. Everybody seems to be happy. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, that we should sign from it.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
This motion is second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carrie. Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Village of Fishkill.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item on the agenda is, uh, Hot, Hot Stuff Coffee Shop, eight Church Street. Does the applicant come forward?
If you want, you got samples?
Oh, you should, no, wait. That one? Uh, Hot Stuff Coffee Shop.
Stop for the record, please.
My name is Stephanie McCool. This is my business partner, Amy Eddie. We've been in business together for about fifteen years in the Village of Fishkill. We currently own Graphic Nature, which is a graphic design and gift shop on eight Church Street. In the village, we've been there since, oh, right before COVID. We decided to add retail after being primarily graphic design on Main Street. And in February of twenty twenty, we saw Mike had an open space that looked beautiful, so we signed the lease. And in March twenty twenty, we were not quite able to open, but we stuck with it. And we were, we opened a few months later and we added retail to our graphic design business. Graphic design and retail are both dying industries currently, and we're both. So we were looking for something that we could still do together since we've been in business together for so long and we love working together. So we said, what's one thing that doesn't seem to be not doing well? And that was coffee. And there doesn't seem to be any place in the Village of Fishkill that is just primarily coffee. Um, we're hoping for just kind of a grab and go coffee shop. We don't want to infringe on any of the awesome local restaurants in the village. Um, we want people to be in and out, getting their hair done next door, getting their dental work next door. We'll make everything sugar free and possible for them. It's really just to kind of have our customers in and out, give them something fun and easy to do. Kids cornered, so moms across the street dropping their kids off can kill a couple of minutes before all the children are with them. And that's how we came up with Hot Stuff.
Okay. Carrie, you have a comment?
Not much background.
I've never done this before.
No, good job.
Um, yeah, I just had a few comments. So, um, this falls into section one seventy-one eighty-nine of the zoning law. Um, because they are in the V C B D district between Church Street and Jackson, they're exempt from the off-street parking requirements as long as the existing parking is not being reduced, which they are not proposing to reduce the existing parking. Uh, so we don't have to worry about parking on this one. Um, I do think there needs to be a correction on the plan. I know it says that there's no parking being adjusted in the rear of the building. Um, those parking spaces are not actual viable parking spaces, so you should just remove that from the plan because it, it just creates confusion.
You got it.
There, I don't think there's enough space there, uh, to actually have the required size parking spaces that are required by the village. So because you're not, um, required to add parking, uh, we don't need to consider that area for the parking. You, you have the spaces along the side of the building that are being made. Yeah, so just take that note off the plan. It creates confusion. Um, and then as far as secret goes, this is a type two action, so there's nothing further that we need to do with that. And, uh, it doesn't require county referral because it's not on, uh, Main Street.
Larry, engineering?
Two, two of our standard comments. Doesn't sound like we're going to be doing any food cooking or anything like that?
No, I have a family.
Family.
Sorry.
I'm not going to cook for yours. You don't want that.
So the, so the first, the first comment is not applicable. It was, we generally, we live in a kitchen, you have to get it used over there. Uh, the second question is, um, we probably need some type of a backflow preventer. It sounds like it's, um, just, uh, aesthetically objectionable, possibly not, not hazardous. So probably a simple double check valve. Isn't the plumbing, that needs to be addressed?
Okay.
There's not one already there.
No, they have to rerun, uh, plumbing and, uh,
Okay.
Uh, they'll, once they get that installed, they can check with their plumbing.
They have. It's a, it's a, it's an easy install. Again, if you want to address it during while, while you're here, I don't know what the any more considerations are, but, um, it could always be made a condition of approval. We've done, we do that in the last prime case of the group.
I'm working.
Teresa, comments?
Um, Larry, was your thing only one page?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, wow. Um, no, no, there's no construction or anything going on, nothing? No.
Twenty insects. Um, okay.
And he, he cut. No, I'm good. I'm good.
I had to say, if we make a motion, we just add the, uh, condition of the nature of backflow preventers installed.
Yeah. I mean, that's all we want to do. Training. Look at us. Williamsburg.
What are your hours of operation going to be?
T B D, but probably, um, close on Sundays for now. And, um, otherwise, yeah, like eight AM to four, three, something like that.
Thanks. Um, I'm just, I'm curious why, just for my edification, this doesn't rise to the level of a public hearing? Is it just because it's like such a small?
It does.
Oh, it does? Oh, I'm sorry. I think I was misunderstanding the order of things. Thank you.
I'm good. No, definitely good.
Okay.
I, before we go on, I do have one correction. I misspoke and said this doesn't require county review, but it does.
It does?
It does.
Okay.
It is within five hundred feet.
So make, make a motion to send it to the county and then set up a public hearing?
Set the public hearing, yeah.
Okay. Uh, no other further comments. Uh, I'll entertain a motion that we send this to Duchess County Planning for their comments?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, Carrie. And, uh, will you be ready for a public hearing in next few months?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we set a public hearing.
So moved.
For this project, for the, uh,
Uh, the, the, the seventeenth?
October seventeenth. At six PM.
Can I ask a question? The, uh, county approval, is there anything we have to do or that you just submit back?
Uh, no, your application gets forwarded to the county by Jenny, the planning board secretary. She, she takes care of that. And then we just get comment back from them. Sometimes they have a comment about the site and then other times they don't.
Do you, it's within church or school or?
From Route nine, yeah. Yeah, if you're within five hundred feet of a state road, you have to go.
Sorry to think so, it's kind of.
But we measured. Yeah, the planner should have measured earlier, not eyeballed it. She eyeballed it.
If it's within five hundred feet of Route fifty-two, is it also to the county? Okay. Okay, so, okay, interesting. Thank you. So, but it doesn't have to go to the state. It goes to the county.
Yeah, it goes to county.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
All set?
All set. All right.
So, do I have a motion?
Oh, we didn't do that? Oh, so moved. I thought I did that already.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, Carrie. See you next month.
Thank you.
Keep practicing. Are you going to do a gross stuff in the top layer?
Probably not.
Next item on the agenda is, uh, Turby Holding LLC, eleven twenty-seven Main Street. Previous, the previous barber shop for a certificate of appropriateness for painting outside the buildings. Appleton, please come forward. Identify yourself for the record.
Um, here in the community, um, uh, the owner of the building.
You wish to paint the?
Just, yeah, the outside. I, um, pretty much rebuilt the whole building from the inside as this was falling apart. We're almost done, um, probably the next two, three weeks. Kind of wanted to refresh the outside as well. I did submit this application a few months ago and, um, they requested we bring, uh, samples. So here it is. Or what the
Oh, here it is.
Like the lime wash, um, paints.
Oh, there we go.
Treatment that we're trying to do for the outsides.
So you only, you're, you're painting the black?
No, no, it's like, it's kind of like a lime wash.
A lime wash, yeah.
Yeah.
So some of it is like, I know you just said, I just want to clarify that some of like the, the clapperd almost, but you're going to fix that because it's loose on the front. Like that's all going to be.
Yes, correct.
Fix it and you're going to paint it.
Actually, I mean, if you pay, if you kind of look now, the building was falling apart. It's all corrected now. So there is no sloppiness and slop.
Yeah, I noticed you guys are working. It looks still on nice, but, okay, so.
Yeah, we just kind of want to refresh the outside because it looks like a puke, to be honest, you know?
Yeah.
And I think this white with like a little bit of a black trim around the windows and the door would refresh it pretty nice.
Teresa?
Um, that, that, that's it?
Yeah, that's what.
That's what it's going to look like. I mean, I did the best that I can, yeah.
No, it looks nice. I like it's a lot better than all black.
Yeah.
Makes it more pleasant.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, it was never supposed to be all black. Oh, this building.
I'm sorry, yeah. Oh, that's the. Oh, that'll look nice.
Um, how much latitude does the planning board have in like the color selection of buildings in the historic area? Like is there a color palette or we just?
No, we don't have a color palette.
Okay. So we just
Not yet.
Make a judgment.
We're working on it.
Okay, so there's not like.
But, but, uh, but black is a historic color.
White.
And white is a historic color.
Okay, okay.
Actually, there is a Benjamin Moore, as you said, they have, uh, if you go and look, they have a historic palette colors.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the major companies.
Yeah.
That's what you're looking out for, the Yellow House, right? Yeah, cool.
And so the reason that the planning board decides on like the color of the building or approves it is because it's in the historic district and we have latitude over the appearance of the buildings in the historic district?
It's an appropriateness determination.
Okay.
So you might find that black in, you know, black, a black door is appropriate, but when you paint all the details black, it's no longer appropriate. So the, the board has discretion to decide what's appropriate for the district. And here it's the attributes of this district, which, you know, the timeframe, because some other certain districts might have different attributes.
Okay, cool, that's very helpful, thank you.
And there's, there's standards in the code and I'll pull them up in a moment and then you can.
Thank you, I know, I have to read the whole code, it's so long, thank you.
It's um article nine A, historic preservation.
Thank you, I'll look at that now.
That was nice.
Go on. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Okay, ahead. Ezra did it.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I have a motion, second and a floor on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, carried. All set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, so if you want to go back, I can just read to you guys what the principles of compatibility are. It's general design, character appropriateness to the property of the proposed alteration, scale of the alteration in relation to the property and surrounding properties and the neighborhood, texture, materials and color, as well as their relation to similar features of other properties in the neighborhood, and visual compatibility with surrounding properties, including proportion of the properties from facade, proportion and arrangement of windows and other openings, roof shape, rhythm of spacing, um, including setbacks.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is uh Crystal Blue Spa.
Crystal Bliss.
Crystal Bliss Spa, uh nine eight six Main Street. Applicant, please come forward, identify yourself for the record.
Uh, I am not the applicant, I'm the architect here on behalf of the applicant. My name is Dana. I'm here to answer your questions. It's a pretty straightforward application, change of use, and because of the insufficient parking, it has triggered a site plan approval.
Sarah, do you have, want to go over your comments on this?
Sure. Um, so it is a change in use, so the site plan is a little tricky because there aren't external features. But uh we do need a few things on there. Um, it needs to be signed and sealed by a professional, a licensed professional architect.
Yeah, I didn't, I mean, that's funny, I assumed that would only be for the building permit itself, but if you like.
Yeah, no, that'll have to go on the site plan, because that's a site plan requirement.
Signed and sealed, you got.
So we'll also need like some zoning and parking requirement information, like the size of the tenant space noted on there, and then what the required parking is for the use. Um, I know that you gave us a parking analysis telling us the observations, so we just need that number to compare it to the observations to make sure we're okay.
Yeah, I've never been in that lot where parking has ever been an issue. People obviously park on the north and east closest to the buildings, but the lot itself is plentiful.
That would, that's it. Um, I'll give you a copy of my memo, but just that kind of stuff, we need some basic information on there to make it more like a site plan.
True.
Um, and then this is a site plan, so we'll have to set a public hearing on it. Um, it will have to go to the county for review as well.
Okay, Larry?
So our, our first comment is relative to uh site plan performance of the uh the villages' code requirements, which requires.
That's a better, yeah, there might, there might be currently one on.
Say that. Put it on the signs.
So, yeah, that, that's actually our second comment. The first comment, and I've heard, I, it sounds like, uh, we've had this comment over several of these projects, and it sounds like the way they, they demonstrate performance with requirements of the site plan application requirements is by providing documents of record. So the prior site plan, do they, do we need that for them for this?
I, I think it would be helpful if we could have that, because we're getting a lot of tenant spaces switching in and out, and we want to make sure they're all consistent on the site plan, the parking layout.
So rather than making you go out and get a survey and, you know, no, get a full site plan, get it, get a copy of, of a recently re- uh approved site plan for that area and submit that as, as documented.
Turns out, so.
There was a tenant earlier tonight who was also moving to that building, and that site plan showed some maintenance parking, where there's gonna be specific tenant spaces just for that use. And so I think we want to build on that, because that's the only updated information.
I do.
There is something on.
I do have an overall, I have an area and all the parking each. It's gonna be four sheets.
It doesn't identify the parking for the tenants and you just want me to know they're all consistent.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I know, I know there's no assigned parking person, so you just want me to identify? Potentially. So you don't, you do not need a topographic survey.
So.
There, there may be a backload, not a bathroom already, but if not, obviously we'll put one in. You do not need a topo.
What?
Topographic survey.
Doesn't sit total.
It's up to the board, but I don't, if there's no experience, proof, I can see what.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking that if you're pulling the site plan, it may already be on it, but.
I really tried to find the topo. I, I contacted the building owner, the property owner, nobody's on a topography of that site in years.
Remember, we get one before.
Flat slate anyways.
Yeah.
The, well, not only the flats, already developed, it's.
It is what it is, yes, nothing's really changing on that.
The, the issue with backload preventer though, um, I mean, there's been different types of backload preventer, so we're gonna, we're gonna need to know what kind it is and.
Let's, assuming we get to the point where actual drawings get sent for permit, backload preventer information will be on those drawings.
We actually require that as far as the planning board.
Okay.
I mean, so, that's not duplicative, it carries over, so he's already got it, but maybe just issue your building permit, so. Have, gonna have to look at the spa to see where it categorized with this, the, the state DOH as far as type of use.
Uh, I've, yeah, uh, there's no, there's, there's no requirements as far as I've, in all of the spas I've done, um, massage parlors, spas, DOH.
They don't consider a hazardous, hazardous use because of?
They do not.
Okay.
Very few, surprisingly few requirements. But by all means, I'm, you'll do your due diligence.
Yeah, well, well.
Yes, I have not encountered any issues.
But that's, that's, that's makes it a lot easier, that's for sure.
So, yeah? Teresa?
What kind of spa is this going to be?
My understanding is um massage, reflectology, scalp massage, skincare, facial massage, that kind of thing.
And what, what, do you know what was the business that's there now?
It was a clearinghouse. It was a, a com- computer clearinghouse for online betting. So when you did Lotto on your phone, all of the bets went to this one particular spot. It was basically nothing but servers and air conditioning. Gobs of power. I've never seen so much, so much electricity in my life.
So a spa is like the opposite of?
Spa is the opposite of that, yeah. So parking, um, did you want to finish that conversation? You want me to identify?
Just in the code, in the code, there's.
Oh, no, I know that, yes.
Yeah, that's it. Um, and then we were just looking at the previous site plan that was just approved for this shopping center, and it looks like the parking lines match, but just make sure that it is consistent, because.
Well, there were, there were notes on the previous plan, they refer to tenants that's no longer in business, so.
Yeah, there were some employee parking spaces on there that were for the dialysis, and the dialysis is no longer there, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so we don't need those notes on.
Okay.
But just make sure, and it, it appears that the parking lines all match that, but let's just make sure.
Don't worry, I'll, I'll review it.
Okay, Tricia, Thomas?
No.
No.
Ezra?
No.
Um, am I allowed to ask him about other projects that he's been the architect for that are not? No, I'm not, okay, great, thank you.
You can email me.
Yeah, okay, great, no, I was just curious, thank you.
No?
Okay.
Okay, we have to send this to county planning.
Yes, and if the board's ready, set a public hearing. Sounds like you probably are.
Seeker is not?
There's no seeker, yeah, the type-two action.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion that we send this project to Duchess County Planning for their comments?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second and a floor on favor?
Aye.
Post, and uh will you be ready for a public hearing on the?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth of October?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we set a public hearing for this project on October seventeenth.
I will reprint this, one, I'll print one larger sheet with the additional parking info. Um, I can give you another package for the seventeenth, right? Or is it only restricted to what I've already given you?
What now?
Can I, can I print, if, can I address the comments on another sheet and give it to you prior to the seventeenth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, and I can give you my card if you have any questions, actually. Oh, my email's not on this one. This is a copy of my comments, and then. You can, uh, email me or give me a call, and I can refer like a symptomically, maybe, and it'll probably help. It, it'll probably help if those, that additional information's on there before.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we set a public hearing for the project.
So moved. Second.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second and a floor for a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Carried, okay. That's, next item on the agenda is Jackson Main discussion on rec fees. Uh, Victoria, do you want to?
Sure. Um, so the applicant has requested that the planning board revisit its March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four resolution um to change the rec fee requirement. Um, it was previously required on fifty-six units, which is the total number of units proposed. The applicant um asserts that they should get credit for the four existing lots, so fifty-six minus, minus four, and is requesting that you amend the resolution so that the calculation reflects fifty-two units.
Okay. You have a memo here from Victoria's, uh, our attorneys. Uh, we went into executive session earlier today to discuss this, and considering that we just sort of got this, uh, I'd like to table this until the next meeting, so that all the board members can read this and understand what's going on, and if you have any questions, you can contact Victoria or Sarah as to if you have any, try to figure out what this is all about, okay? Is that, is that acceptable with the board?
Yes.
Yeah. It could be precedent, so we need to.
Yes, could be present, presidents. Yeah, okay, so we'll uh table this until the next meeting and go from there. Uh, that's all the agenda items I have. I'd like to make an announcement here, on October twenty-third, uh, Lunch and Learn's webinar, Design Guidance for Better Buildings, that'll be from twelve-thirty to one-thirty, it's on your computer. Yeah, webinars, okay. And on November fourteenth, Battery Energy Storage Systems, this will be up in Duchess, uh, up at the, in Millbrook, uh, from six to eight PM. Uh, this is a rather hot topic going around, because everybody's uh going around in these humongous giant batteries.
What was it, November what?
Uh, November fourteenth. Yeah, November fourteenth is a Thursday.
Yeah, yeah.
And uh, a lot of people, a lot of communities are dealing with this thing, and uh emergency services are up in the air about it, because they don't know if this thing catches fire, how do you put it out? You can't use water, so the experts still haven't come up with any ideas, so. Uh, another thing.
Was that, remember the um?
E-bike?
That green shirt had something on it, is that what you're talking about?
No, 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 these are giant batteries.
Okay.
The size of tractor trailers, larger.
Yeah.
Right. So that's very, that's coming up, and then on December tenth, uh, Lunch and Learn is another webinar, contemporary comprehensive plans, that's from twelve-thirty to one-thirty. So. Uh, Jenny's got the, you've got copies, you sent these out, right? From the county?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. There was a, you?
Oh, yeah, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, and then, so those are an hour, so that's one point each?
I don't, I don't have, yeah, we'll have to figure that out. I will put your names in up at the county, so you will automatically get it from when the county sends out these notices.
I signed up for the two webinars, so I'm excited.
I'm gonna just, uh, so we, I'm gonna need your email addresses.
Actually. Oh, maybe we're not making people do via, via officials?
What?
Remember years ago, I had to fake, they wanted you to have a Village of Fishkill email?
Yeah, there was Gmail accounts.
Yeah, Gmail.
Right.
But I guess nobody on the, there's no one on the board here that was around, and I never changed it, because that would have given me like five emails, but.
Are we eligible for like official Village of Fishkill email addresses if we would like to do that for the purposes of tracking the work on this board? We're not eligible.
Is there, is there even one?
We'd ask the mayor, okay, great. Okay, great, that's awesome, thank you.
Okay, so whatever email address?
Yeah.
You want to? Okay, that's all I have. Uh, I will be on vacation for the November, for the October meeting, so. You will be in command. Okay, does anybody on the board have any comments, questions before we adjourn?
No, um, I have one more question, I'm sorry. So um the reports from H and H and uh Pajia P E P C, are those like publicly available as well, or is it just we would be, we would have copies of them, just the board members?
Public, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
They don't get posted on website or?
Okay.
So usually, um, the website doesn't update it, and you are posting.
I posted like, yeah, yeah.
So the projects are being posted, since.
Great.
Generally, they're not posted?
Okay.
But there's.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so there, are they um considered like uh the property of the Village of Fishkill as works for hire? Or are they the property of the firms that have developed them?
It's like between the individual contracts between.
Okay.
Public documents.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
There's still a lot of speeding on Broad Street and not, and people not stopping at lights. Oh, we don't, oh, there's no trustee person here, never mind. Usually we.
Where's the speeding?
On Broad Street?
Yeah, where I'm from.
I live.
Yeah, the whole street.
Really?
Yeah, and they don't, nobody stops at stop signs, so.
I'll.
Usually we have a trustee member here, but not today.
I'll pass that on to, I'll pass that on to the board of trustees.
Do we know who our new uh person is?
Well, thank you, that was a word.
I've been asking, I don't know.
Okay, I'll find out.
Alright, thanks, Jen.
I haven't heard uh who was, who was, who was pointing that position. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second and a floor on favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.
When you guys were asking for samples, she put.